Okay, we'll get started.
Did the minutes come in an email maybe? I can't remember. Because I knew the minutes were going to be like that long.
It's four o'clock and I'll call the Salina Planning Commission to order. Dean, are there any changes to the agenda as they've been presented?
I think the only thing we would want to make known is on item number six there where we -- it's an internal text amendment, but we won't discuss that at all. We're just -- we've got some additional work to do. We were focusing on dog kennels and now we're into ducks and pigeons and other things. So, we've got some additional work to do. So, if anyone's interested in that, we're not going to discuss that at all.
Okay, so item six will not be on the agenda today. Item number one is the approval of minutes, but they have not yet been prepared.
They're not in a form where we think you can act on those, so we'll have those available for you on the meeting on the first.
Okay.
Because they're not in good enough shape to review.
Okay, we'll go to item number two. Amended application number Z-08-2 filed by Grain Belt Supply Company Incorporated requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural district to I-3 heavy industrial district on a 2.94 acre tract of unplanted land at the northwest corner of Fifth Street and Diamond Drive. Remember, this was on the agenda two weeks ago, but they requested to wait with that so the request could be expanded. Dean, would --
Mr. Hirsch will be presenting that report to you.
As Chairman Monroe stated in our opening here, this application came before us two weeks ago with the idea that the parcel I'm pointing out here on the screen in the larger portion of the south would be rezoned from I-1 or A1 to I-3. Prior to us meeting, the applicant also acquired the property to the west and wanted to roll that in to their application, so it was postponed. The original application was for 1.96 acres with these two parcels. They've added nearly an additional acre. And you have to hit it. Here. And that brings our application up to a rezoning of almost three acres, 2.94. The -- for the intent purpose and the reason the applicant is wanting to rezone the property is it's currently zoned A1 and they are wanting to expand their business, which is manufacturing and storage, and is not allowed in the A1 district. So, they're needing to rezone it to I-3 for their expansion purposes. The zoning ordinance requirements in the I-3 zoning include the permitted uses of manufacturing, storage, and welding, and they have setbacks of 25 feet on all sides of butting a street except when an arterial is adjacent, in which case we do 75 feet from the center line of that right-of-way. There are no minimum side requirements or rear yard requirements for this particular rezoning since we have no adjacent residential dwelling units within the city limits. The minimum lot width for the I-3 zoning district is 50 feet with a minimum lot depth of 100 feet. This comes to a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet and a maximum lot coverage of 75 percent of the building lot. There is no structural height for a maximum, and parking is calculated on a case-by-case basis depending on the specific use. And all paving must be paved with an all-weather material. Doesn't necessarily have to be asphalt or concrete. It can be crushed rock or stone or gravel as long as it meets the criteria of an all-weather surface and performs under conditions of snow and rain. Outdoor storage does not need to be screened unless the storage, outdoor storage that is being taken place lies within 200 feet of a residential lot line. In that case, store or screening would be required. For signage, the maximum sign area is calculated by looking at the distance of the adjacent street frontage. We calculate the street frontage along Diamond Drive and we would take it times four. So, four square feet per street frontage, per linear street frontage along Diamond Drive and Fifth Street. The maximum height of any sign would be 30 feet, and there is no required landscaping involved when we're looking at an I-3 zoning district. When we look at rezoning a property from an I-1 district to an I-3, or A1 district to an I-3, we need to look at the suitability of the current district and the proposed district. Currently, the site is very limited in its potential development with it being A1. There are a few agricultural uses allowed as well as residential uses and some other uses such as churches and civic uses like that, but certainly no commercial or industrial endeavors would be allowed. The applicant is wanting to expand, as we said earlier, their current manufacturing facility, which is to the north here, and kind of creates an L shape around the subject property on the north and on the west. The question for the planning commission is whether the subject property is more suitable for continued residential use or if an industrial use may be more conducive for the area. The only residential uses currently on the property or on the subject property are in the northeast corner, there's a residential dwelling. There's a residential dwelling to the south of that property and one to the west. The two on the east, as we'll talk about a little later, do not have adequate sewer service at all, and all three of them have -- are on city water. The character of the neighborhood, when we look at the character of the neighborhood, we're looking at whether or not the I-3 zoning would be compatible. The area, when we look at from a macro perspective, a little out, a little further out, we'll notice that the current property of the applicant is zoned I-3. The three properties, when we look at the subject that make up and compose the subject property are all A1 and are used as residential dwellings. To the south, we have a hotel and a vacant restaurant, which are both zoned C-7. That's the composition of the area that we're looking at. So, we can see when you subtract the residential dwellings that are on the subject property, it's very commercial industrial in nature with only the residential world dwelling to the east as a residential unit. Staff believes that the presence of the large lots in conjunction with the proximity of Interstate 70 makes the property unattractive for redevelopment or residential use in the future and therefore maybe, or industrial use may be a warranted situation. If the planning commission approves this request, it will basically be expanding the existing I-3 zoning of the north side of Diamond Drive and the south side of Gold Road. An argument could be made that the existing Grain Belt Supply is more compatible with the neighborhood since it's already there, and expanding it would not be increasing and a non-conforming use to the neighborhood. In the public utility services, when we're looking at public utility services, the subject site does not have direct access to sanitary sewer service. There is a sanitary sewer line here. It's the light green one that's barely visible, and that service terminates about where the owner's current facility, manufacturing facility resides there along the west edge of the subject property. In order to bring sewer service to this area, they will either have to extend it from their current facility or extend it to the east in the Diamond Drive right-of-way. For water service, there is a six-inch line along the south side of the subject property in the Diamond Drive and a 12-inch line that runs north and south under Fifth Street. So, water service is certainly adequate in the area and shouldn't be an issue. When we look at the storage, the storm storage, storm drainage storage on the site, the applicant is proposing to use the current facilities, current storm sewer infrastructure that is in place at the southwest corner of the property. Storm sewer study was conducted by BWR, and the study found that the current infrastructure would in fact support any access or water running into that inlet at the, at that point right there, the inlet right there. The question that staff would have is the means by which the applicant is proposing on moving the water on the entire property to that inlet so that the water reaches its destination there. Is the applicant proposing to do some sort of underground piping system? Is there going to be concrete swells or swell to maneuver the water and direct it to that inlet? And if so, is there any drainage easements being proposed for this plat and rezoning? When we look at how the proposed rezoning conforms to the comprehensive plan, we'll notice that the comprehensive plan shows this site, this location, being appropriate for industrial uses. The comp plan also provides some guidelines in which the development should adhere to. One of those is to be compatible, to have a compatible building design and setbacks, and another would be to pay particular attention to be given to the screening and visual separation between business and industrial uses and other nearby land uses. And another would be to provide uniform performance standards to enforce and to protect adjacent property and the surrounding land uses from noise, dust, odor, air, and water pollution. When staff analyzed the rezoning application, we noticed that the original property in which the applicant is currently operating their manufacturing facilities from was rezoned in the 1970s. And since then, this area has remained as a residential development and is unlikely, given the location and proximity to the predominantly industrial parts of Salina, to continue to be residential or to have any kind of redevelopment. And while there is some residential development or residential dwelling to the far east of the subject property, we don't think there should be any negative effects on the surrounding neighbors as long as we have appropriate screening if we get outdoor storage and activity along that eastern edge of Fifth Street. The planning commission has a few alternatives. The planning commission could recommend approval of the I-3 zoning as requested, subject to the set-as factory plating of the property. The planning commission could postpone consideration of this request if it believes additional information is needed to make a recommendation. And lastly, the planning commission could deny this rezoning request if it believes the requested zoning classification would be incompatible with the comprehensive plan or zoning and uses of nearby property. Staff would recommend consideration of alternative number one, approval of this rezoning request. We believe this is a unique area and that the zoning is transitioning to industrial away from the residential. Another thing that we would want the commission to look at and ask is what the plans of the applicant are for Fifth Street. Currently, there is no pavement. It's an unpaved street, and although the applicant is proposing to dedicate some right-of-way for Fifth Street that currently does not exist, there are some concerns about putting in a curb cut where there is no paving, and we would suggest possibly looking into having some platted restricted access along the eastern edge of this plat for the, when it's rezoned until paving is constructed to meet city standards on Fifth Street.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
That property directly to the east of the property in question, where that residence is, that is currently out of the city limits, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. That's a county property.
County property or in the county?
In the county, sorry. Excuse me, that's what I meant to say.
Is that the only residential property left in that area?
I believe that's the only dwelling unit now. This, I believe, is all set for, or deemed to be residential dwelling. It's all agricultural, correct Dean?
Yeah, there's a couple houses farther to the north on Fifth Street, but as far as in this general vicinity, that's the --
Where are the city limit lines?
It's the faint red one here that John's pointing out.
Is that in the center of Fifth Street?
It's in the center of Fifth Street in that location.
Oh, do we ever get Fifth Street paved if it's half in the county and half in the city?
We'll have to get the other half into the city.
Solidation.
Yeah. You talked about limited access for that Fifth Street. What does that mean?
Restricted access would be, it would be a platted, it would go with the plat, and it would restrict access along Fifth Street, and to break access or to break the restricted access and put in a curb cut, it would take city commission approval. In essence, what it does is it prevents the applicant or the property owner of that property from putting in a curb cut and using Fifth Street when it's not suitable for traffic, when it's not, doesn't meet the city standards as far as the street and being paved.
We wouldn't be impeding the people that live in that residence to the east there any --
No, it would, this restricted access would only apply to this property and the eastern edge of the proposed plat and rezoning that we're looking at.
The other alternative to that, as opposed to plating restricted access, would be you could have just a condition on the plat that said, "No driveways on Fifth Street until such time as it's paved." That would be an alternative just as a condition and not a physical change to the plat. But I think we'd want to hear from the applicants about what their thoughts are about Fifth Street.
I just had one question too. It's not really a make or break. I'm just curious, where are you talking about putting the corner drain? Where does that feed down into? I know that there's a lot of problems with flooding in the Stimmel area, and I just didn't know if we were sort of increasing the water flow of an already --
This is Mulberry Creek, which is, this is the portion north of I-70, and the storm drainage comes down to here, and there's a pipeline
Okay.
that goes directly over here to Mulberry Creek. There is flooding in this corridor here. What the purpose of the drainage study was to say, "We know that this water's going to end up here. Does it need to be detained or stored before it's released because of capacity issues here or here?" And the answer was no, that this increment's not going to impact flooding.
That's not going to impact anything down south where there are --
Because this right here and the bridge at Knight Street kind of serve as almost a dam, and so some of the flooding out here is because water backs up on this bridge.
Okay, good, good.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, would the applicant care to address the commission and answer some questions regarding this rezoning? State your name and address, please.
My name is Warren Etiger. My business address is 116 South Santa Fe, and I'm the architect for the project. Couple of things that I'd like to comment on before I take your questions. The comprehensive plan identifies this area to be industrial. Not only is the block, the entire block that we're looking at completing the development on industrial, everything to the north is already industrial. The property to the east is in the county, but it's almost all entirely in floodway, which means that there's almost no development that can occur there. So, this is kind of the last piece of property in there that can easily be developed. Dustin and Dean were talking about traffic and the development of Fifth Street. I would propose that you consider the condition, no curb cuts on Fifth Street until it's paved. Our current plan is that it, we're currently talking with the city about what steps can be done, taken and how we would get that street paved. It's not suitable for the kind of truck traffic, delivery traffic that Grain Belt currently utilizes, and so until that's paved, we would only work off of Diamond and off of Gold, and our current plan, site plan, would continue that until such time as Fifth would become paved. We have some site plans that we're working on that in the interim until Fifth Street was paved would keep cross-traffic between Diamond and Gold on the site instead of taking it across Fifth. Fifth is barely an all-weather road and certainly not suitable for the kind of truck traffic that's currently in that area.
Any questions of the applicant?
Did you have more that you were --
No, I don't. I was just looking over my list and I think I covered everything.
Warren, let me ask you real quick. Are you saying you'd like us to consider going ahead and while you put that curb in, go ahead and put some cuts in? Just sort of your, you guys are saying, "We're not going to use them yet, but we want to put the cuts in," or?
Eventually, after it's paved, we would probably want to have access off of Fifth Street, but rather than making it a restricted access, I would request that you take the option of making it a condition that no driveways be put in until such time as it's paved. That's a much easier thing to do in the future than to come back and go through the city commission for releasing the access.
That would be an administrative action instead of requiring any commission actions.
Right, okay.
This would be handled during the plating process, is that right Dean?
Yeah, it would actually be more appropriate to make that a condition of the plat itself and not the zoning action, but the next item, the plat. And so, what that would mean is that if that was a condition of the plat, then at such time as Fifth Street was paved, then Grain Belt would just be working with our engineering department on appropriate curb cut locations as opposed to having some formal commission action on it. Because you generally only restrict access on very heavily traveled streets where you want to limit or reduce driveways, and that's not the concern here. The concern is that Fifth Street's just really not in any condition to handle industrial traffic.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. This is a rezoning issue, a rezoning case, and therefore it's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission regarding this rezoning request? Well, seeing none, anyone from the audience have anything to say? Okay. With that in mind, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
Well, I would move that we approve application Z-08-2.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion before we vote.
We are adding on that, what Warren had asked about.
We're going to save that.
That'll go with the plat.
That should go with the plat.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Six zero. Item number three. Amended application number P-08-1/1A filed by Grain Belt Supply Company requesting approval of a final plat of a 2.94 acre tract of unplanted land at the northwest corner of Fifth Street and Diamond Drive to create a building lot for a planned business expansion to be known as Grain Belt Subdivision Number Two. This too is carried over from the March 4 meeting, so staff, your report?
Yeah, this, since we've covered a lot of the same material and with the rezoning we just talked about, I think instead of going into the nature of the request and the background of why the applicant has acquired this property and is looking to rezonate, we'll look at some of our comments about the plat. The plat, well, it's not going to change any of the boundaries of the particular properties that the applicant has required. The only changes will be made are necessary and positive ones with the dedication of 30 feet of right-of-way for Diamond Drive. Currently, there is no right-of-way for Diamond Drive, and this would give city the needed right-of-way on the, for the north half of the east part of Diamond Drive. In addition to Diamond Drive, the plat will also dedicate 19.66 feet of right-of-way along the west side of Fifth Street here, shown on this diagram of the plat. The utilities in the area are currently served by a six-inch water line south of the subject property in what would be the Diamond Drive right-of-way and a 12-inch line along the east side of the property, which would be the Fifth Street right-of-way. The current sewer line under Diamond Drive terminates, like we said, about 50 feet to the west of the subject property and does not adequately serve this subject area in its current state, but since the applicant owns the surrounding area, there's a lot of options to getting sewer service to the appropriate places. The storm sewer system is currently located under Diamond Drive with the inlet at the southeast corner of the property and has a 40-inch culvert that goes underground and dumps out into the Mulberry Creek area there. The BWR study looked at the 48-inch line and concluded that that sewer system, stormwater sewer system, could handle the capacity of the area of the development for water runoff. The plat currently does not contain any easements for utility or access, and depending on how storm water is conveyed off the site, there may be a need to designate a drainage easement, but other than that, there are no needs for easements. Like we said in the previous staff report, we would like to hear what the applicant is proposing to do to direct the storm water to the inlet, if they're just going to let it cheat off into Diamond Drive or if they're directing and manipulating the water in some fashion. This is essentially a cleanup plat of a property that's currently there and unplanted within the city limits. Based on the staff's review, there doesn't appear to be any issues, and staff would recommend approval of this plat as proposed. And as Warren said earlier, we would recommend that there be a condition of approval that Fifth Street would not be accessible along this subject property until a roadway, a street that is constructed to city standards is being constructed.
Okay. Any questions of staff on that report? I guess one question I have is, why is only 19 feet or is it 20 feet, essentially 20 feet, dedicated for the roadway on Fifth Street? That's not a very wide right-of-way.
Part of it is that the way that the gravel has shifted over time and what's that, that is a reflection of is that the, from the, where the center of the roadway and the center of the right-of-way or projected right-of-way don't match up. So, the way that the road is offset, we would really need to get the additional right-of-way off the other side to get the 60 feet. we would really need to get the additional right-of-way off the other side to get the 60 feet. So instead of being 30 and 30, which you can do pretty easily when you don't have an existing gravel roadway, it's going to be 19 and 41 essentially because of the way the section line falls in there and the way the roadway is offset. Because what the owners have is they own to the section line on what is Fifth Street there. And so all they can dedicate that would be useful to us is 19 feet. If they dedicated 30, we'd still need more right-of-way on the other side because the road, the gravel and everything has kind of shifted offset to the east. So on most of our section line roads, like Ninth Street or Ohio Street, the section line matches up with the center of the roadway. But that's not the case here because it seems like the gravel has kind of shifted to the east over time. So all they can be asked to dedicate is what they control. And based on where the roadway is located, that would be 19 some feet from center line. The section line, actually.
To get the rest of that right-of-way, call for redevelopment of that parcel of land to the east, won't it? And that could be a long way off.
Or just to have them dedicate their piece. I think, and this comes up a lot when we get on the fringe of the city. But the difference of what occurs in the city and what occurs in the county. In the city, we get right-of-way for our roads. The owner dedicates the right-of-way to the city. The city owns it. In the county, what they do, and they did on Diamond Drive and they did on Fifth Street, the owner continues owning the property to the center of the street. And then it's subject to an easement for a roadway. Well, there's two disadvantages to that. One, it's the owner still controls the property, not a public entity. The other problem with that is that the county's roadway easement does not include the right to extend utilities. So that's why this plating process is very important. That's why the dedication of actual right-of-way is very important because it does two things. It puts the roadway under public control. And then it also allows for the extension of utilities, like water and sewer, electricity, things like that. So whenever we get the opportunity in a fringe area where the plating and the cleaning up and the dedication of right-of-way is important. So it wouldn't necessarily require that the owner on the east side give up or have any development. They could simply take what is a roadway easement today and dedicate it to the public as right-of-way. And that would allow the street to get built.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant please approach the podium and talk to us a little?
I think our main question just has to do with your drainage solution, Warren, and how you'd get the water over to that conveyance.
We have an immediate plan for a building and a long-term plan for how that site gets developed. And in either case, we would be handling drainage from roof and from paved area and directing it to the inlet that's in the southeast corner. We haven't worked out the detail of how much of that is surface and how much of that is piped. It would most likely be a combination of the two in order to control it properly on the site. That would be done with private lines and private surface drainage, all of which gets reviewed by city engineering. That's part of the plan approval process, and they will look at that in detail. Look at the quantity of runoff, look at how we're controlling it and directing it, and go through an approval process when we do that.
How much of Diamond Drive is paved right now? I was out there, but I can't remember.
It's all paved over to Fifth Street. It's just the condition is variable. It's not consistent quality of paving.
Is the motel in the city limits, the Salina Inn? Is that on platted property?
No. They own Diamond Drive.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant here?
So the access from Fifth Street, would you go over that again, please?
Our current, given the status of Fifth Street and the unsuitability of it for truck traffic, we would, our initial plan would not utilize Fifth Street as far as any traffic into or out of the site. And we have a contingency plan, a temporary plan, for how we would get from Gold to Diamond if we need to make traffic across there. At the time when all the steps have gone through to get Fifth Street paved, then I think we would relook at that and want to look at opening up a curb cut off of that. We've started discussion with the city about what it's going to take to get that paved and want to participate in that process, but there are a number of hurdles in there.
Does that large building that runs north and south, is that Grain Belt building?
Yes. Not the one that's farthest in the view, but the...
That one right there?
Correct. That's all Grain Belt.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else from the audience like to address any issues here? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I'd just briefly go over our language that we came up with for recommended condition would be that the plat would be conditioned on no driveway access shall be permitted on Fifth Street until such time as the portion abutting the plat is improved to city's street standards.
And if we stipulated also that this would require staff approval of the stormwater runoff plan?
Yes, that would be fine. We, as Warren mentioned, that's part of our building permit plan review.
Well, then I would move approval for application number PO eight dash one one A, conditioned on no driveway access on Fifth Street until, I didn't get the rest of that, Dean?
Yeah, until such time as the portion of Fifth Street abutting the plat is improved to city's street standards.
Yes, and then staff approval of the stormwater runoff plan.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion before we vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four. Application number Z zero eight dash three filed by Cornerstone Development Corp Group, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential on a 37.14 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive and east of Mariposa Edition. Staff report, please.
I'd also point out, we're going to spend most of our attention on the actual plating portion of this. We don't think there are many issues relating to what this property ought to be zoned. I would also point out that the city of Salina, represented by Steve Snyder here, is also a co-applicant because what the plan is here to actually rezone a portion of golf course property and incorporate it into the subdivision. So if we're going to have Mr. Snyder here at all our meetings, we might as well give him a permanent spot.
And an increase in salary, at least.
Yeah. Only if he splits it.
I think you're familiar with the, there was a master plan for what was referred to as the Mariposa area that dates back to 1988. And the, it has been developed in pieces and phases over time. But now that we have a water line in that extends from the Markley Road Tower over to Marymount Road, we have a street in Cedar Ridge Drive. We now have interest in rezoning property on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive from what's current agricultural zoning to R1. The golf course is also zoned agricultural. And there are some pieces of that that are proposed to be incorporated into the subdivision. So that would also be included in the rezoning request area. This property has never been platted, but it was annexed into the city in 2003. And our next item is a preliminary plat. We'll focus on most of the development-related issues. But the request is R1, which is our most common single-family zone. And we'd be talking about 25-foot front setbacks, seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks, and 25-foot rear setbacks. There's no variations or deviations being requested by the applicant for many of those standards. They believe that this property is uniquely suited for residential development due to its location, the topography, and its proximity and accessibility to the municipal golf course. And certainly, they believe that the A1 zoning inhibits development of the site. I think if you've been out to the area, you would note that like River Run and Cedar Ridge additions, which are in this general area, this is a piece of ground that has a lot of elevation change. There's 50 feet of elevation change in some fairly closely related areas. But it's highest at the southwest corner. It's lowest up against the golf course. It has a number of dips and rises. There's three different drainage basins that we're dealing with, and we'll get into that in more detail. There are some challenges related to access to the property and need to extend off-site utilities. But other than that, there's really no limiting factors that would restrict development of this property. And the applicant believes this site is suitable for some form of residential zoning and development similar to the Mariposa Edition that is located to the west. We're not going to abut any existing subdivision. I think if you could go back to the vicinity map, John? Yeah, this would be Mariposa right here. This lot here is actually part of Mariposa. It's platted and zoned for cluster townhome development, but is undeveloped today. This is Cedar Ridge Edition across the street, being developed by Bob Hayworth. This piece here is owned by Bob Hayworth. He had an option which he exercised. It's covered up here, but this is the Florida Soul Townhomes. And then Briargate right here, all this A1 property that you see there is part of the municipal golf course. So really, the only directly abutting subdivision would be the Cedar Ridge Edition across the street. There is some townhome zoning in the area, but the applicants believe that this property is most suitable for single-family home development. While the golf course is zoned agricultural, it's not a true agricultural use. So we think that this is just a logical extension of the residential zoning pattern we've seen in this area. I think the public utilities and services part, I will address more specifically in the plat. But certainly, fire response is available from the fire station at Marymount and Crawford. It's only about five minutes to the entrance to the subdivision, so that response time is good. Certainly, police protection will be provided by the police department once streets are built. This is in the Meadowlark, Lakewood, and Salina Central enrollment areas. This is part of Neighborhood Park Service Area Number Eight. And so there is no identified Neighborhood Park land that's been identified as a suitable park site in this area. But there will be a fee associated with the building permits on lots here. And it's certainly not ideal, but because of the shape of the property and the terrain on Cedar Ridge Drive, there's only one street access proposed into this property. The comprehensive plan shows this as a primary service area and suitable for low-density residential development. Your options would be to approve or recommend approval of the R1 zoning subject to plating of the property. You could recommend approval of a less intense change to R zoning. R zoning primarily is for larger lots. And the primary difference is that it requires a 30-foot setback from the street. We didn't recommend that here because some of our lots up in the peninsula, we think that a 30-foot front setback would make that rather tight fit. You could table the rezoning request if you need additional information or you want to see major revisions made to the design or street layout before you consider rezoning. Or you could recommend denial. We're recommending approval of the rezoning request. And we've cited six reasons there that we think support that. It is landlocked on three sides, but it does have access to a good collector street, Cedar Ridge Drive. The layout that they proposed really follows the contours of the land. It does preserve and highlight some of the natural features on the property. The building styles and density would be compatible with the golf course and the character of nearby development. We are inside the city limits and adequate public facilities are available or can be extended. And certainly, it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I think we would take any questions you have about the rezoning aspect of this. We don't view that as a difficult recommendation to make, that this is suitable for residential and single-family residential at that. So we think you should see if there's any, this is a public hearing on the zoning, and take any comments on that. And if that recommendation's favorable, then we'll get into some additional detail on the plat.
Any questions of staff at this point? As Dean said, this is a public hearing, so we ask those that are interested to make themselves available. Would the applicant please present himself and answer any questions we might have?
Thank you.
Your name and address?
Thank you. My name is Greg Adams with Campbell &amp; Johnson Engineers, representing the developers. We're out of Concordia, Kansas. And a lot of our discussion will come in the next item. But we are representatives. And Dean, and I do want to say that you guys are probably the most well-informed planning board that I've seen. Your staff does a great job of giving you all the very detailed staff reports. But I am available for questions if you have any on the rezoning.
Any questions on the rezoning issue? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience, since this is a public hearing? Since seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I move that we approve application ZO eight dash three from A1 to R1, single-family.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's been rezoned. Item number five relates to this. Application number P zero eight dash two filed by Cornerstone Development Group, requesting approval of a preliminary plat of a proposed 70-lot subdivision of 37.14 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive, east of the Mariposa Edition, also known as the Grand Prairie Edition. Staff report?
I would like to first compliment both the applicants and their engineer for coming up with a very good concept for this property. And that's what a preliminary plat is. A preliminary plat is a review of the development concept and whether it works and all issues are addressed related to future development of a piece of property. And that's what we've attempted to do here. What will occur subsequent to this is really where the details will really be involved. And that's where Mr. Snyder, as part of the golf course management, will be very heavily involved because there is a lot of touching between this development and the design details and how it impacts the municipal golf course. But again, we are talking about a 37.14 acre tract. They would like to divide that into 70 residential building lots. The only piece next to this which is platted already and zoned is the piece directly to the west. And that is platted and zoned, but no development. the west, and that is platted and zoned, but no development has occurred. Just by way of a little bit of history, this quarter section was acquired by the Graves family back in 1963. And in 1967, after this Schilling Air Force Base closed, there was a plan to relocate the municipal airport from this location out to the airbase. Obviously, the city owned this land, and there were various ideas advanced for how to reuse it. One idea that was advanced was to develop a municipal golf course. What they found was that they had basically a north-south running layout that paralleled the runway and wasn't too interesting. So, the Graves family was approached about possibly contributing some of their land to the design and layout of the golf course. And what occurred was 25 acres of Graves family land was donated. And what that resulted in is that, you know, it was basically to work with the layout of the golf course. So this piece, in particular, this peninsula here, which I think a lot of golfers don't even know is not part of the golf course, was not part of that contribution to the golf course. So it was left under the ownership of the Graves Trust. And so what you have is between holes seven and 12 and 13 and 14, you've got little peninsulas of land that are privately owned. As I mentioned, in 1988, there was a master plan for developing this area, and that plan called for closure and elimination of Cloud Street and construction of a new realigned street that connect Markley and Marymount. We had the Mariposa addition go in in 1989, and then we had -- that was followed up by Florida Soul and Briargate here. Then we had River Run over here and Cedar Ridge here. And so, when Cedar Ridge was done, Cloud Street came out, and this street was built, which really remade this whole area. So the applicant here, the Cornerstone Development Group, has purchased a portion of the Graves Trust property, and they'd like to lay that out into a subdivision. They hired surveyor and civil engineer to look at that. When they looked at different layouts, they started having some discussions with the golf course staff about potential land swaps and boundary adjustments that might make everything fit together. And, John, I think I have a summary there that's item two.
Before you switch to that, would you go back to that other?
The bigger aerial photo?
Yes. And, I mean, I'm looking at this on the paper, and then looking at it here, would you show where the housing actually moves up there into the golf course area?
This, if you compare the plat that you have in your packet, this is the west boundary right here. This triangle is the boundary today between the land and the golf course. If you look at the plat, it is more squared off.
Uh-huh.
And that's where incorporation of golf course property comes into play. Then you've got the street coming through here, and then up here is what I'm calling the peninsula, which has got a public street here, and there's some adjustments, a little bit not dramatic, but adjustments there between the golf course property and the subdivision boundary to make all that fit.
Okay. Now, the green, I guess are those fairway areas on each side of what will now be what you're calling the potentula?
Mm-hmm. This, and maybe Steve can get up here and narrate, and I'll use my pointer, but this is the 12th hole here, and this is the 7th hole here. But I'll let you narrate, Steve.
Basically, this property surrounded from the front nine, you've got, as Dean mentioned, fairway seven running north and south, but on the bottom is six. That, the hole right there, the tee box, and the green going east, northeast. The area coming on the west side, as Dean mentioned, is 12, and then 13 going back north, 14 coming back south. And the area in between is area that we currently maintain as part of the municipal golf course, as Dean mentioned, is now considered to be in some of the housing area.
And maybe we get into this much further, but so how do the golfers, once houses are all built into that area, then how do the golfers get from area to area? They don't cross over that anyway?
No. One of the concerns is the maintenance staff does it currently, and that's one of the things we did, work with the developers, and they provided, offered to provide some of the access that we have been using. And basically, what that is today is from fairway six, which is on the front side, cutting across to the north to 12, especially with fairway, with the mowers, the greens' mowers. That's very important for us. And also, from fairway seven, crossing right in there to the backside to 12. Those two areas were very important to us as far as retaining that ability to cross over. Hopefully, the golfers are going in sequence from one to 18, but with maintenance staff, obviously, is very important for us to have that ability to do so. And I guess we'll get into a little bit earlier, later on, the triangular area. That is just basically maintenance requirements, responsibility of the golf course. It does not come into play. And so that probably works well for their proposed development. And those trade-outs, we think is a very good working relationship with the developer to take care of our interests, to our concerns, but also allow them a little more flexibility in that, I guess, an unusual shape there in that triangle.
So presently, there aren't any golfers that cross over that? I understand the maintenance needs, but golfers don't?
No.
Use that area at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
Could you maybe pan down just a little, John, so we could see farther north on the What Steve's referring to is if you're playing seven, you're coming up this way, and this is eight, and then nine takes you back to the clubhouse. Then you come back out on 10 and 11, and then come back this way on 12. So there's really, if you're, there's no need to cross through that area as part of your rotation at play.
Also, the park, the playground, I guess it's just playground area, that's to the east of Markley Road there, that kind of services the ball diamonds? That's not parkland? That isn't in any way parkland that would be considered part of this?
Of the neighborhood park area?
Yeah.
No. We installed that basically for families of ballgames in terms of.
Okay.
It was never really considered as far as one of the neighborhood parks.
Okay.
Well, one thing we did do, obviously, is we got an indication from Steve and the golf course staff that they viewed this favorably. And then, we, because it involves city property and potential rezoning and plating, we took the concept and some of the items of potential mutual benefit to the city commission, and they authorized Steve to be their representative, more or less, on the city-owned portion of this property. So, again, because we are potentially zoning and plating a portion of city-owned golf course land, the city is a co-applicant. But I did want to go to that slide, too.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
John? That's right. That just, so I don't think Steve has even seen these numbers to just what the actual calculations are, but just to give you, we're talking about an area that's 37 acres total, but what, if you took all the pieces of the golf course, and they're not all in one spot, that they're proposing to incorporate into their subdivision, it's one and a half acres. To round out some of the fairways and rough areas and edges on the course, they would take land that they own today and would deed over to the golf course, about .27 acres. But if you figure in the areas that they're giving up for lots or development, that would be corridors for Steve's maintenance staff to cut through those areas and drainage areas as well, that's 1.33 acres that essentially is given back to public use. And then, the other part of this, what we'll get into a little more in detail, or since we have Steve up there, we can talk about, and that is the, what their plan is for stormwater detention, and that is to basically take the area between holes 13 and 14 and make a detention pond out of that. That would also be a retention pond, and so it would have a level of water in it and serve as a water hazard and also as a possible source for irrigation water for the golf course.
Before you get into that, it just is complicated enough that if I don't stop at the point where you are. Number two, the acreage to be given? No, 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 no. Number three.
Mm-hmm.
Where your maintenance people will have access? What will that actual, that become city land, then?
Well, we're still going to figure out exactly what that arrangement would be.
Yeah.
The, Steve has indicated that we would prefer city ownership, because then we'd have city maintenance and have control over that. But the other aspect is that there'll be some drainage improvements in there that really don't impact or benefit the golf course necessarily. So it may not be the golf course staff, it may be city public work staff or others that would be involved in maintaining that, but it would most likely be city ownership.
What will that look like? If I'm standing there and looking at those two areas, what will it look like?
I think it was our intent to have it remain in a natural state. A lot of that today is, a lot of tree.
Prairie-like, kind of. Okay. So the roadway would be what for your maintenance staff? What would the roadway look like?
I, you know, we really didn't get into a lot of discussion on what that would be or if it was a requirement, but we need to have something. Today, it's not hard surface. It's basically a worn path that we just access across there. But I think to really fit into the neighborhood, it needs to be some hard surface that has a good appearance.
And?
It can be maintained without being wet and muddy and run, you know, ruts or anything else.
And so there isn't a concern that other vehicles will see that as an after-hours access point prankster kind of into the golf course, or?
Well, I think we have that, we have those opportunities, or they have those opportunities today in certain areas of the golf course. And I think we haven't, we have not seen a big problem in that particular concern. I mean, it has happened.
It wouldn't be gated at the end?
I don't think that that was our intent to need to do that.
Okay.
Could you point out on that plat where these areas are, for example?
That'd be a good thing to do on drawing three, John.
18, is that right?
Yeah, I don't, we may be able to blow up parts of this, but the, what we're talking about is this strip right here. And it would, it coming probably on the north side of this traffic circle, so whether it's limestone screenings or asphalt, whatever, but you'd have a trail through here, coming like that. The other one we're talking about is right down through here.
How wide are you talking about?
You have to get magnifying glass to read it, but we're. The ones on the south are close to 90 to 100 feet wide. The ones on the north are narrow, but you have to realize that this, this is kind of a pond here, and there'll be a detention structure here. So what you'll have through here is this will all be publicly owned, but this is a pond today, and then you'll have your trail corridor beside it. So, as Steve mentioned, you'll probably have a trail, a mowed area either side of the trail, and then the rest of the area will probably be left in its natural state. But it will be, in this neighborhood, and, you know, this is at least 100 feet wide through here, and then this is between 60 and 100 feet. This is only 20-some feet wide, and then it's a little wider up there.
Okay.
Now, these pathways cross the street. There's not a grade separation between the trail and the street?
Yes, they would cross, they would cross the streets.
They would cross the street.
Yes.
So then you do have a entrance issue that Sidney was talking about.
Yeah, I don't know if you go back to the aerial photo, John? I just, but there is a, there's a series of asphalt trails in Mariposa, and there's one that comes right down here, right to the.
Right at 15 and 16.
Yeah.
But those are walking trails, right?
They were built for golf carts.
Yeah, but this is more like traffic, like car.
Well, you're not talking about big trucks. You're talking about like your maintenance, your lawn maintenance equipment. Yeah.
Ours would be, but I think, Sidney, your concern would be just the general public coming off those and getting on the golf course. And they have that, there's several access points today.
No, I just don't know about them, huh?
Yeah. And we really don't have a major issue with it.
Yeah.
It has happened, but it's been a big issue.
Yes, I think we'll go back to the, if you could go to the preliminary infrastructure plan, which is four, John? Just to walk you through a couple of the items. In order to make this work, again, this is the proposed detention pond, which is off the subdivision and actually between holes 13 and 14 on the golf course. They also would need to run a sanitary sewer line from here over to the sewer manhole that's in Mariposa addition common area. That is their plan for sewer. And then for water, they would have an internal network, but then an off-site connection over to, there's a 20-inch line in Markley Road. So, when you start touching the various aspects of this to interact with the golf course, obviously, they'd have to coordinate with the golf course in terms of design and location of this pond, coordinate on the alignment of this sewer, and we'd probably want a granting of an easement to identify where it is. Then coordinate on the discharge from this pond, which comes across here to get to the Mariposa pond. And then, this would be both a water line and some form of emergency access roadway. So they would need to coordinate with the golf course on that. And so, for their, their street access and design, when you looked at all the sightlines available on Cedar Ridge Drive, there's really only one safe connection point, and that's what they've chosen for their location, for the street connection to Cedar Ridge Drive. That leaving this one public streetway in and out, they are proposing a secondary emergency access, which would connect from Markley Road, go across the third and seventh hole on the course, and allow for access into the north end of the subdivision of what is referred to as a peninsula. And one struggle we've had, where we don't normally have when we're writing a report, is they have not proposed or come up with any proposed street names yet. And so we've, usually, we'll make reference in our reports to streets, and then you can look on your plat and see where that street is, but in the subdivision, but we, so we're just referring to that as the peninsula area. So, in order to do this plan, they would have to request and receive a variance from the limitation on a cul-de-sac of 600 feet. And so, what they're looking at, total from the entrance to the subdivision to the end of the peninsula is on the order of 2,600 feet. And so, in order to make this plan work, they need two variances. One, the maximum length of a cul-de-sac, and also, because of the terrain, they've got some tight tangents between street curves, which are less than 150 feet. So those are two specific. So those are two specific variances that you would have to look at and approve in order to make this layout work. I'd also point out that we had extensive discussions at our last meeting about sidewalks and cul-de-sacs. And what we would point out is that this dead-end length is pretty comparable to the length over in River Run across the way, which only has the single way in and out from Marymount. And what was done there was a requirement, because of the length of the street, to require sidewalks. They requested to only be required to have sidewalks on one side of the street. So while River Run is one gigantic cul-de-sac, it does have sidewalks, and certainly when you exceed six hundred feet, it's perfectly reasonable to require sidewalks. What we weren't clear about here and would need to hear from the applicant about is whether they are looking or would be requesting to only be required to have sidewalks on one side of the street, whereas normally we would require it on both. But this does have some comparisons to River Run. It's, it's pretty unique. It's relatively landlocked. There's a lot of topography on site. There's really only one safe and suitable place where you could connect to Cedar Ridge Drive. And they, this layout, this remaining piece was created as a result of what the golf course layout was and what was deeded to the golf course. So it's certainly no, not related to the applicant's choices. And again, to mitigate concerns about having a second way into the development, they're proposing to work with the golf course to have a secondary road come in here from Markley Road. And what that would mean is if there was any kind of blockage of the one way in from Cedar Ridge Drive, that would be available for emergency vehicles to come into the site from the north. That has been looked at by both the fire chief, fire marshal, and golf course staff, and they were comfortable with that arrangement as an emergency access in. So I think probably the only issue that might relate to that would be what that final design would consist of, so that it was hard-surfaced enough to support a fire apparatus, but also blend in with the golf course itself. So there are a few details, such as street names, runoff detention devices that aren't ponds, but would be used to slow down or detain the runoff. That would be in those common areas. And then certainly having written agreements in place with Mariposa about the sewer connection. And I did have one other slide, John, I think it's number six. And this is one of those detailed things that we'll continue to work on. But one thing they would like to have is at the rear of the lots, which would be adjacent to the golf course itself, would be some walking trails. That would be five, about five feet in width. They've got a couple locations where in the back you would have electricity, cable, phone, and in one case sewer. And in another case, the sewer would not be there. But one of our concerns and things we'd have to work through is if your plan is to drain the back of the lots and drain them, in some cases, onto the golf course and then down into the pond, if you put these elevated trails in, dislocate that, and the water's trying to get from this side over to this side, there may be some challenges there that could conceivably form a dam, which could trap people, or not people, but they're a trap water in people's backyards. So that's another detail that we would like, we would like to work through. But again, we've, in addition to the land swapping, you know, some of the potential benefits to the golf course would be a, we would finally have a surveyed and monumented boundary along the south side of the course that would define just where the golf course begins and ends. There's potential to add a water feature to the golf course. The other side impact of this is that there are two restrooms on the golf course today that aren't directly connected to the public sewer system. If this network all went in, then we would have the ability to connect those golf course restrooms to the public sewer system, which would be a plus. And so, again, they have done a lot of work and a lot of consulting with the golf course staff and with Mr. Snyder about providing areas of mutual interest. We just think there's a lot of details left to work out. But if questions that you have or would pose today are addressed to your satisfaction, our recommendation would be to approve this at the preliminary stage with obviously more design work to be done. And we've identified eight conditions there that are, they're placed at your places on your notebooks. And we think it's important that they obtain a letter, something, a commitment from the homeowners association. Our reading of what their covenants say in Mariposa is that the common area there can serve as a utility easement, but you have to have permission from the owners association to do any excavation in the common area. So we would want some confirmation that they have that approval. We would want the emergency entrance design to be reviewed, and the design for that roadway and the specifications to be approved by the fire chief before this came back, before you for final plat approval. We'd also want Mr. Snyder to look at that design to make sure it was compatible with the golf course operations. And we would want something where the design, that the boundary adjustments are staked, that the location and design of the detention pond is staked and designed, at least to a stage where the golf course staff can locate that in the field. We would want easement locations across the golf course to be finalized before this came back for consideration of a final plat. We would want the design plans and specifications for all the infrastructure to be a point where it meets the approval of the city engineer. I think the only one that we're really discussing in condition five there, these here are pretty standard cul-de-sac turnarounds. But if, if in their design, they were looking at maybe having a grassy island or anything in the center of those cul-de-sacs, we'd want the engineer, their engineer and our city engineer just to confirm that the final design, if we're talking about islands in any of these, or we're gonna have an island and kind of a traffic circle here, that what that design results in still allows for fire trucks and trash trucks to navigate that. Because one of the things about this here and this here and this intermediate, so that if you're a fire truck responding or a trash truck serving this area, you don't have to go all the way to the end to turn around, that you've got these intermediate points where people can turn around and get back out. So they have incorporated that into their design. And again, the fire department's reviewed that and is, is comfortable with that. But again, the design details, certainly we want street names that we can respond to on the final plat, and then our subdivision and block corners identified again. So that's partially so that the golf course staff can go out there and see in the field where these proposed boundaries would actually be. Because it's one thing to look on in an aerial photo or a drawing, but you can't really see what the impact is on the course till you see it staked out a little bit. So that would be our recommendation and our recommended conditions to get to a final plat. And I said, we'd be open to any questions, and certainly we've got representatives of the developers here if you have questions of them.
Okay, any more questions of staff?
If you would go back to the aerial view and show us exactly about the detention pond and then that secondary road.
This is an aerial photo with the lots and the layout imposed. And again, we'll go back, this is hole number twelve with the green right here. Today, you come down, there's kind of a draw ravine that goes through here. You come out, and this is the T-box for thirteen with the hole playing up this direction. And this is fourteen coming back this way. And there's a big grassy area here that there's really nothing in it, and they're proposing to do a triangular pond in that area. So it would be in the, what would be, I guess for, some of us would be out of play, for some of us would be in play, but it's not in the fairway. We'll just, we'll just say that, but...
But it would always have water in it?
Yes, the idea would have it.
And in the capacity to have additional runoff water?
Yes. I think we have kind of a detail of that, and, well, let's, let's not go to that, John. But yeah, the idea is that you, you have what you call the, they would design, and Greg can speak to this better, they would have a permanent pool, and then you would be designed to have additional capacity on top of that. If you're thinking of it, think of the pond that's there today on the par-three course up near Crawford. There's a pond there. It has water year-round, but it's designed to have detention storage on top of that. But it's not a dry pond. It's a wet pond, but it, the water level is very low compared to the banks, and so there's an area for additional storage. But it's not a dry pond. This would be a wet pond.
So the runoff that that would take care of, I mean, can you kind of go through the runoff needs for the whole area and how that would...
I talked about three drainage basins. Basin number one is not really a basin, but this is kind of a ridge line right here, and all the water, this, everything slopes back this way.
Okay.
So these rear, the rear of these lots, it's not gonna be a large increase in runoff because nothing from the street will get there. But basically, from this point here, this slopes back that way. The second basin is, there's a whole lot of water that comes through here. There's a pond in here today. That water comes through here, and it finds its way down to here. And some of it would come down between here and go over. The third basin is water that drains this way from east to west, comes across in this direction, comes across twelve here. So you would have water coming into the pond from this direction here, and then they're proposing a pipeline that would drain this street into the pond. So that, that would be...
And then further north?
Further north of the pond?
No, north of the, the...
Here?
Yeah, clear north, there.
Well, I'll let Mr. Adams speak to that, but I'm assuming that they're gonna grade this street to drain back this way.
Okay.
And then the water would come across over there.
And then the access road, the secondary road?
You may have to go back to the other one, John, because you can pan on that one. But I think she's wanting to go to the aerial photo.
I wanna see the aerial, yeah.
The, there are, there are some networks of kind of grassy dirt trails that are there today, but you'd be looking at a, an alignment, something along this line and coming from Markley Road. There's a couple ideas we've had about grass pavers and different things like that, but I'll let Steve speak to that.
Basically, that exists today. There's a gate off of Markley. It crosses in front of number three T-box, but basically before you get to the fairway, the irrigated part of the fairway. The cart paths have been thickened, beefed up, if you would, where the areas where the trucks would cross those. The reason they exist, we have had occasions where emergency vehicles have had to respond to the golf course and ambulance. Also, to, up through recent times, fireworks have been shot in this particular area, and emergency vehicles have had to come in and support staff have come in. So that, basically, this exists today, and we are just looking at continuing. And we feel that addressing some of those concerns with the grass-type pavers in the areas that are not on the, or crossing the cart paths today, it was very suitable to us, and it would be, as I said, just be an emergency access point.
Any other questions of staff?
Are the walking trails all on private property then?
Yes.
And so I'm just thinking the sidewalk issue, and sidewalks are for public use.
Mm-hmm.
And I think their, their train of thought was that because there's this network of walking trails, that maybe it means that there's less of a need for sidewalks?
No, I, we discussed sidewalks with them earlier. I'm just not, and I believe they intend to have on-street sidewalks. What I'm not clear on is whether their plan was to put it on just one side of the street and not both.
Okay.
But that, that would, they've not mentioned anything at all about the trails being a substitute for sidewalks. But I would let them, if, if they would like, I'll just say this, the subdivision regulations require sidewalks on both sides of the public street. If they would like to limit that to one side, they need to tell you that and request that today, so...
Could we hear from the applicant? Maybe we can talk about some of these things.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure to address you guys, and especially on this project. It's been quite an exciting project, and the developers, I hope you can see, have put a lot of effort into planning and making sure that everything is right. They've talked to the golf course and city staff, and they're, they're so detailed that they, they haven't come up with street names yet. They want to make sure everything is right, and I really appreciate that.
Not going to suggest any street names, but I will point out there are no householder streets in Salina.
Any planning commissioner's names could be used.
Yeah, yeah.
There will be none.
And there probably will be none.
Any questions of the applicant?
Well, talk a little bit about the trail system, the sidewalk. What are you asking for, for the sidewalk? Are you asking for a variance and...
We, we think, the developers think it's important to have sidewalks.
On both sides?
Yeah, so they, they have that walking trail basically as an amenity to the, to the subdivision.
Okay.
They want it to be an attractive subdivision and one that's, has amenities that others don't. And of course, the golf course in itself helps that, but they also are putting in some extra effort to make it a nice subdivision. That's just one of the things that they're doing.
Even around the cul-de-sac, you'll have sidewalks?
Uh, well, there is, I probably, just off the top of my head, would say that I wouldn't, just because of the small amount of right-of-way that's behind the curb in a cul-de-sac.
We got into that last time.
We probably would just cut straight across with handicap ramps before you get to the actual cul-de-sac.
Now, are your houses located enough from the drive, driving ranges or the fairways that the windows on the back part of the house won't get knocked out?
Uh, no, that's, can't guarantee that.
It's the joy of living on a golf course, huh?
They have talked about in their covenants to, they have spoken of some pretty extensive covenants that they want to do with this, as far as ownership responsibilities, the maintaining the rocking, walking trails, one of them. Another one is likely putting in a requirement for tempered glass in the back, backyard so that, so that that won't happen, hopefully.
What about height restrictions for the housing? I don't know, I'm just thinking about, it's going to change, golfers are gonna be shocked, I'm sure. But it just seems to me, if you have very tall structures in there, it just, it really kind of impedes the whole visual flow of the area, and I don't, I don't know if you're...
I think there's, there's regulations as to height requirements within that zone, but I don't think that they have, I've not heard of any greater restrictions upon that than what zoning may necessarily give.
I have a question, just as an information item. On the infrastructure plan, there are boxes that say flow in and flow out, and then there's something underneath there, and I can't read it. What does that say?
I believe that's rim elevation.
Rim elevation, probably, yeah.
It's an elevation number.
Yeah, well, it just gives... Yeah, well, it just gives, we give a flow in and a flow out, and also the rim elevation, which basically gives you.
Tells you how deep the sewer's going to be from the rim of the manhole.
Right. Gives you the depth of sewer from that, from that location.
Thank you.
But we are, there's things that we've, that I can address if there's, there's questions about drainage or anything else. We've, we've put a lot of thought into it. And Steve has been great to work with as far as working with us. So any of the other issues, off-site sewer, we, we feel like we've, we've come up with a, just an excellent design for off-site sewer that will eliminate a lift station. And we'd seen some preliminary plans before we got a hold of the project that showed a lift station and, and quite a long distance of force main. And if we can get Mariposa to work with us, which we're confident we can, that will eliminate a lift station. The golf course has been accommodating to, you know, let us cross their fairways. Of course, it will tie in their restrooms as well. So it just kind of all works nicely together for sanitary sewer.
What is the range of the price that you're thinking of lots?
How much money you got?
Yeah. As much as possible.
That's a good question. I don't.
Don't know that, yeah. And you can have 101 what-ifs, but.
Sure.
If, I understand that the golf course land is zoned agriculture. If in 10 or 15 years, the city decides to close the golf course, there's no understanding about use of that land or zoning or anything like that at this point?
The golf course?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think that's a concern from the developer's standpoint. I would think so anyway.
I'm just thinking, you buy a home there and you think it's always going to be a golf course behind you and.
Become housing.
Right.
I think that's a, let me just tell you from a realtor's standpoint, a quote I like to give when they go, is this big field always going to be a big field behind me? I always say, probably not. Always assume.
Yeah.
But I bet the golf course is probably going to be there a while, Steve, don't you think? Yeah.
Well, yeah. I understand.
These, this holding pond won't have enough water in it to help with the irrigation of the golf course?
Um, that's a good question, unless we hit a artesian well or something while we're digging. I doubt it. I don't think so anyway. I mean, we're, we're, as far as the stormwater is concerned, we're, we're planning on doing it like typical standards for the city and releasing that water within 24 hours, and it will drain away. But we will hold water in there.
But you will have some water in there permanently, you hope.
How much that is and all that, how deep it is, we, we'll get into that with Steve and his staff and in the design phase of it. But, but it's basically, that's not really a concern of ours as far as, it's just a preference issue from the golf course standpoint.
The, yeah, just one other, the access points to the walking trails will be just behind the people's own homes. There's, are there access points in and out that?
Mm-hmm. It will, it will connect to the city street and a couple of locations, at least the way it's proposed right now. It'll connect on the west boundary to Cedar Ridge. And then, we've also asked.
Going forward, John.
We've also asked for, I think that the cart path accesses, we've, we've designated those as, as travel easements. Basically, given the, and I don't know that we've really cleared this with Steve, if that's okay with him, but, and city staff, but just to give the residents a chance to make different loops, you know, of varying lengths. It's about a mile all the way around it if you go clear around the outside edge. But, you know, some may want shorter paths or whatever.
Saying somebody lives here, then come down here, get on the.
Right. That's right.
Like that.
I just have one question for Steve. So these homes, when they're set up, are these people allowed just to come right on the golf course and take their cart and go play, or do they have to actually go around to the clubhouse?
No, they, they need to check in and start wherever our management wants them to start.
So they won't be able to cut in, get on your cart paths, and go down from their home?
Well, we don't want them to start playing golf on number six.
I know. But there will be access from their home site onto the golf course. They can just take their golf cart right down without getting in the city street and start playing at number one after they check in.
That's correct.
Okay.
Especially since we went through the no golf carts on city streets last year. We would allow that too. One thing I, while I was up here, I was talking about the closeness of the homes to the, to the course of the fairways. One thing, and this wasn't by design, but it works out in favor of both the homeowner and the golfer. The majority of these holes are in alignment that the majority of golfers are right-handed. Majority of golfers slice, if they're going to hit anything other than straight, it's going to be a slice more often than a hook, which puts the ball going away from the homes on either one of the fairways, any of the fairways that are adjoining the home. So not to say that somebody's home won't be hit, but the likelihood is reduced because of that factor itself.
Is fencing allowed along that, the golf course, golf course side?
Um, like, on private property, I think, you know, they'd have to address that. I don't, can't answer that part.
Yeah, I think Florida Soul has a fence along their section.
Right, yeah, they do.
They've talked, developers have talked about in their covenants restricting not having fences at their backyards.
Yeah.
Yeah, our city code would allow fences there, but that would be their decision if they want to keep that an open area.
Okay. Any other questions of the developer? Anyone from the audience care to address the commission? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Well, I'll just say, it is, it's, it's definitely nice when the developer and the parks and the city and everybody can work together. It makes our job so much easier when they come in and say, look, we've, we've made this nice park and this plan, and here you go. I think it's a, I think it's a brilliant development. I think, obviously, Steve has worked real well with them from what they've said and from what I've seen here. So barring any other negative comments, I'm never good at making these, these statements. But I'd move to approve application P-08-2 filed by Cornerstone Development Group requesting approval of the preliminary plat of a proposed 70-lot subdivision of a 37.14 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive, east of the Mariposa Edition to be known as the Grand Prairie Edition.
This is a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Subject to the eight.
Subject to, yeah, subject to the eight, yeah, the eight.
This is a preliminary plat, and there's a lot of things to be worked out, so. Have a second. Any further discussion before we vote?
And so, there are no, they're not asking for any variances of any kind?
The variance they're requesting, that would be included in if this layout would be the street length variance that exceeds 600 feet.
Right.
And then it's more of a technical layout item, but they also have street areas where they've got curves that are occurring without 150-foot straight tangent in between. And that's just a function of the layout.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to item number six, and that.
We're not going to have any discussion of that today to carry forward.
Carried forward to a future meeting. So is there any other things we need to talk about, Dean, before we adjourn?
We have a deadline that was set by the, the city commission for turning in expression of interest forms. We have had some discussion about if you are a planning commissioner or advisory committee member, with Sydney is both, that we may, because we do want to encourage participation and input early in the process, that we may ask or just appoint planning commissioners to, to serve on a particular one. We would still like you to, if you could by Friday and want to participate in those, turn in your expression of interest forms. But it could be that advisory committee members and planning commissioners could get assigned to a particular focus group, because we really do want you to be involved in some of the input sessions early on, since it's going to come back to you later. The more you see and more input you have early on, the more it'll make sense to you later, so.
Has a date been set for those focus meetings?
We've been work, we initially thought March 24th, 25th. Now we're looking at April. So we have additional time to form those up and notify them, so.
That's even better.
I think fixed would be too strong a word, but we're, we're either looking the first or the second week of April. But again, we want to emphasize, this is like a, a two-hour commitment. It's not, it's a, and again, focus means focus. We're going to focus on this issue as it relates to Salina and solicit, brainstorm and solicit a lot of input, so it'll be intense. But it, it's that one week and that one session, so.
Okay.
We did try to email out to each of you that, that form, and that gets returned back to the city clerk's office. And the reason for doing that is you might be really interested in parks and recreation, or you might be interested in housing, or you might be interested in economic development. That gives you a chance to say, this, this is what I would like to be involved with. So we'd still encourage you to do that.
A meeting scheduled for April 1st?
We do have April 1st. Just to give you an idea, in our further collaboration with Mr. Snyder, the Parks Recreation Advisory Board is meeting tomorrow. They're going to look at a revised park layout for Golden Eagle. And then we plan to bring that back to you on April the 1st. We also plan to come back with, we've met with the downtown board of advisors and talked about permitted and conditional uses in the downtown area, drinking establishments in the downtown area, signs in the downtown area. We'll be bringing that back on April the 1st. Think we're ready to talk about zero escaping and actual changes to our ordinance that would incorporate that. So I think that would be a full enough slate. But if those all pieced together, then it would be Golden Eagle coming back to focus on the park question, and then downtown uses and zero escaping.
Sounds like a three-hour meeting.
Yeah, but the other secretary used to bring us cookies.
Yeah.
Really? That one, we're going to eat pizza, I think.
I think that was like once a year.
Oh, no.
Anything else that should come before the commission? We are adjourned.
As the waters of the Potomac River roar by at Great Falls Park, it's 800...